For real, everybody stand when I do the pledge. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will just have our invocation. Most gracious heavenly father, we thank you for another day, another beautiful day that you've given, Mr. Lord, and the chance to come together here and work to make our little town better. Lord, lead and guide us and help us along the way so we make the right decisions. I pray that you reach down and touch and bless each one here tonight, your Lord. Just keep your hand up on us as we go through this meeting. Your precious name be amen.
These chairs are not the best chairs.
I've been going to get them from the hospital for what, last six years, seven years?
I'm gonna send you a reminder.
They're good ones. Yeah, there's what we had for the meeting over there. Roll call.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Tally, Commissioner Hick.
Approval of the minutes, February 6th, 2025. Did I get a chance to look over them?
Motion approved.
Got one change. John is, you put A S Q U V, place E S K E W. Just read through that.
And it's what?
E S K E W.
K E W.
Same, same pronunciation.
Well, I thought it off of that, but I bet my thing just flipped it and I didn't, but alright, thank you.
That's the only thing I was saying. Okay, you all hear a second?
My second. Sorry.
I forgot the rule about theirs. Okay, roll call please.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hick?
Yes.
Dude, I need to sign this one or that one.
Uh, this one. And then I'll redo the first page of it.
That's pretty good. That's the first change we've made on in a long time.
Yeah, that's down to issues.
Okay, we're starting now with reports from the board. Getting things reported. Commissioner Tally?
Uh, I did get stuff from Friendship Park. We talked about it. I got that ordered. And the total on it was five thousand five seventy-one fifty-eight.
And that was on what?
On the Friendship Park.
Oh.
For the cleanup?
Yeah.
For the facade grant. So they delivered a little bit of it and the rest of it will be here, I think, on the thirteenth. That's supposed to be.
And did we get enough of that to do up there too?
No, I had ordered it yet, but I'm going to. That was basically, I got the shredded from the park up there, and then probably get the nuggets chunks or whatever, that and a pair. Cause it's a, could do the shredded, but probably the kids kicking it around.
Yeah.
They're probably easier cleanup. But anyway, three quarters or seventy-five percent of that will come back from the state. That was basically the underlay, the weed barrier, the mulch, rubber mulch, and some planters and different things.
Forgot about that. Wow. Anything else?
No.
That you can think of? That you, Ms. Courtney?
Yes, um, I've had some, actually some of the school buses having issues coming up through Buzzard Roost where they're parking, where you can't get through their stuff. Well, stuff is already being like stored on the sidewalks. So now they've started parking and taking it up. And he says if there's another car coming, he can't get the bus through. So I think that's something we need to address. Maybe even start, I don't know, start with a letter to those that are, you know.
Yes, sidewalks I need to park on.
You know, the one that parks down there?
Their bus.
All the time. I guess he still lives with his mom, but just a little black truck that he's up and over. But these are parking where you know where they're at. And that's gonna be part of this other deal. When we get it set up, and believe me, they're gonna be happy with me, but.
I thought we could go ahead though, at least start that.
Yeah. I think we may have, I don't know if we've ever sent them a letter or not to you. But they seem like when you say something, they just bring more. So we're hoping we can get this to, I'm hoping to get it going. We'll get more into that here in just a little bit.
That was the only complaint that I had. Well, I.
We're not good.
Well, you know, I had the ones I messaged, um, asking about roads, the potholes and stuff, but we've decided it was not city roads. It was, uh, yeah, that we couldn't do anything. That's all I had.
I got me a list. I'm set. I have to write it down now. Actually finally got a meeting set up with their end test rep, judge, sheriff, court clerk, city attorney. And I think Copper Hill's gonna join the meeting too, cause they're wanting to do the same thing. But we, if you wanna go with the fourteenth, which is next Friday, nine thirty to Justice Center, where I'll go and meet if you got any questions and try to get everything figured out so we can get things done and get moved on with this cleaning up.
Fourteenth, what time?
Nine thirty.
Eighteen.
Yep, that morning.
Justice Center.
Yeah, I figured it'd be easier to meet down there. The ones that's most important in this thing, that's where they're at. So we can just go to them. But that worked out fine. I've been trying. It's like, gosh, just trying to get everybody together. But John, we had it figured for the, for the thirteenth, but thirteenth was tough. For the judge. But that's, got that part going. Then I've talked to a couple of guys about their septic system over here for the, at their garage or whatever. And I've got a couple of quotes when we ever get into that here in a little bit. Then of course, we talked a little bit about bird's fencing coming up. And they'll get us a quote to get the fence and fix it apart. Went ahead and got the license filed for our hospital. But I don't think right now, I didn't, didn't need the credit card. Apparently when we filed for the ownership change, that must have covered it, cause it's, they wrote out.
Didn't have to file.
Okay, that's good. So it didn't cost enough. But I got that going. Oh, guys, and then you've sent me something about that city community block or development block grants or whatever, testimonial. I opened that up and finished that up. And yeah, just basically how important they are to, to us. I mean, you know, cause they, I don't know, we wouldn't get a whole lot done without them really. But anyway, done that. Of course, this is a good one here, which we know, we got the block development grant for the water on the other side to finish it up. Got it and signed all the contract stuff and it's a million dollar grant basically to do all the water on the other side. Get loaded all that over there. So luckily they went from a five hundred, that last one, went to a million. So we should be able to get through this and get it done. So then the next one we can apply for a week. We can use it for a lot of other stuff. So hopefully. And luckily with it going through us, but the utility district's paying the match, so.
Are they, just one question I got though today, they gotta follow the same guidelines?
Yeah, everything would be just.
I mean, like with the fire hydrants and everything, putting new stuff.
Yeah, I think these guys do that. I don't, I don't.
Well, we need to make sure.
Well, if it being federal, yes. You know, cause they actually added some this last time that we hadn't ever had since. Cause I know there's several dead room doing this way. So, yeah. But anyway, I, I know I've got it. I can forward it to you. It's got the whole, whole outline on it. Cheryl may have made a copy of it. I don't know. Should have everything on it. Of course, then we've done the amendment to extend the grant. I signed that to get that, what was it, Laura, that was, we needed the extension on? So got that.
Well, just to finish it up.
Yeah. But anyway, so got all that, I reckon.
And all that was granted. We were, everything was good on extension.
Yeah, yeah. That wasn't a big deal. Oh, guys, then, you know, we talked about something. So I had, I had something there. And the grant wasn't gonna work for us. But anyway, I talked to the development district and what was his name, Paul McKee?
Yeah, McKee. Yes.
He's looking into some, I told him what we were wanting to do up there. So he's looking into some other stuff. Yeah, the two grants they'd sent, I'd forward to you, I thought it was something, it was basically for Parks Director.
Right.
And some stuff that really wasn't gonna benefit us too much. But there's, there is some stuff out there and told him what we were looking to do. So hopefully with what you was talking about, now we can, we'll get something. He hadn't got back to him. I said, if it don't, I'll still get the meeting. But he should be getting back with us pretty quick. There's something here that I don't know if we, maybe we just wait till we get on down and talk about it, cause I made a note here. But other than that, I know I missed, God, this man's, it's been crazy today. It's been awful. I threatened to dislodge the country. I don't think I touched him. I don't think I made a single phone call or done nothing at work today. It was all about the city, which is alright. Wore me out, but we're here and we'll keep on getting it. But uh, with that, that being down, we'll move on to no old business. And I don't think we have anything old business.
Well, yes, it's the first, it's the first one there. Yep, there's my second mistake.
But anyway, okay, that was just discussing employee health insurance there.
Yeah.
We still got some discussion and meetings to do with folks. So we, there won't be any decisions made on that tonight. So we'll just put that to next month and be old business again, I guess.
Yep.
Let me move on down here and do a, renew the commercial lease agreement for this building between ETC. Yep. And I don't, had anything, I don't think anything had changed. Um, this is three-year term?
Yes.
We've been here three year already?
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, actually four years. We had one year without a lease, cause they couldn't decide that, you know, they were good about that. So.
So did the press stay the same?
Everything stayed the same. Um, when I talked to Cora that day, she said everything was gonna stay the same for me, just to fix it up and change the effective date.
The date, okay.
And the end dates. And once we passed it and got you to sign it, I'd send it to her and they would get it signed and all that stuff. And we'd get a copy. She asked if I would get you to sign two copies. So this one and that one. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty good. Cause they could win upon us, but maybe they like us. That's good. But in the meantime, I've got here a motion to accept another commercial lease for three years for the, for the building we're in. Right now, can we decide if we ever get a chance to build another one or whatever?
Yeah, I made a motion to approve the lease.
My second.
Renew.
Roll call please.
ETC.
Mayor Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hick?
Yes.
Copy off, I did. I just need to sign one spot on the bottom up.
Yep, let's see it.
Of course, I guess you dated or whatever, I didn't say date or whatever. Next we got some quotes for resealing and marking the basketball court and hopefully pickleball court.
Yeah, I went up and did some measurements. And the part on the side where the tennis court is, there's actually enough room to turn it and make two. Had to have two courts there.
I thought there might be room for four.
Well, there was really close to being three. It's very, very short, but two and you would still have room on the sides and everything. So, um, the seal, I mean, I got quotes to seal it and do the markings for the both pickleball courts. And then the basketball court, just to do the lanes, you know, just to, to remark those. Um, that one to reseal, fill in the cracks, uh, get all the debris out and, you know, that one was a little, that one was forty-six hundred to reseal it, fill the cracks and do all the painting. But then we could probably get by with not resealing it for a little bit longer, but the cracks are gonna have to be filled and all that debris and the paint. So that one was, um, twenty-three hundred.
Yeah, I think it's a little better to reseal it to.
Yeah, get it all, especially if we're working on the park. Because then when we reseal it, the paint, I mean, you gotta have to repaint it and stuff all over again.
Both in from the same?
It is, it is. That's the same one. And I should have made y'all copies, but I didn't. But you can look at those.
But what, all I was gonna say is being, if we were gonna consider the forty-three hundred or forty-six?
More copies, yeah. I just want a ballpark so we know what we're looking at.
Sure. And that's, that's, I'll be honest, that's, I expected that. I expected four, five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's the time you seal and stripe, striping is expensive, even a small place.
Cause the last time we done it was oh-seven, the way, whenever we first.
Yeah, it needs to be re-sold.
Yeah. So you can hardly see it. And of course, you want the pickleball court smooth and level. So.
Basketball too.
The pickleball, that's old folk, you know, yeah, them kids, they can fall. It don't seem to hurt them.
So the layout, so to be, what the tennis courts is, it's two pickleball courts.
It's, you just turn it the other way.
And then the, but the basketball courts.
They would stay the same, but the markings would be, you know, all the lanes and the three-point line, which is not gonna go around that.
And you said that the whole court are just enough room for three?
Mm-hmm. No, two. On the, on the tennis court side now, you turn it and you can make two pickleballs.
Right.
But then the basketball would just say basketball.
There, there wasn't, yeah, there's just enough room for one pickleball court and the other side.
Two, two.
No, on the basketball court.
Oh, no, I don't, I didn't, I didn't think about it anymore.
I mean, I, I think, I think we oughta look at just leaving the goals on the edges. I mean, people won't shoot, but.
Make both sides.
Make both sides, do the whole thing, have four.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, that way they.
I mean, it's there.
Have a turn. Might as well make the best use of it and just seal it all. And yeah, if you don't, if we could get a, another quote, I, I'd maybe change it with that and get a quote and then we'll just get a couple of, couple of prices. But I, that's gonna be in the ballpark. I mean, it's gonna be, to do the whole thing, probably six, eight grand. But.
And then.
We gotta buy nets and all that stuff up too then.
Well, that's, uh, you don't wanna completely get rid of the basketball goes, cause they're still.
Oh, yeah. There's still a lot of people that go play basketball.
Still one thing. Of course, we gotta straighten that one up for the tree. Yet it, but, but yeah.
So is this something that you think that we can do?
We can do it financially.
You can do it, but I'll tell you, I'll be honest, the better, better thing might be to wait till hear back from the development district.
And see if there's any.
If there's anything there, cause some, they might pay for fifty percent or eighty percent of, of, and that way it'd be the reselling, the striping, the nets.
Well, maybe by the time we hear from them, we can get a couple more quotes and then get on it pretty quick.
Yeah, cause, yeah. Cause the good thing, but if we do this and spend money, it's done. If we get a grant, then that could be our match. You know, the eight or ten, whatever it's gonna cost us.
Get a, a much better facility. Yeah.
Yeah. Cause I tell you what I'm seeing, and especially on older stuff, and even basketball courts. You've seen them at the boys and girls club in Benton? That plastic court, it connects together?
Yeah.
It's already lined up. I mean, that killed them. You seeing that? And that, as rough as that pavement is up there, you, they might be able to come in there and do that and it'll level up. I don't know. You know, but it's pretty neat, cause it, rain goes through it, whatever. And yeah, it just, man, they have that set up just a little while. But I'm sure it cost, well, I don't know what it cost. I've never really checked it but I know, without you, the pickleball stuff is, I mean, there's, it's, it's coming on everywhere around. But that, I don't know how long it's been since I've seen somebody play tennis up there. Been a long, I mean, been a long time. But.
Okay. Well, I'll get some other quotes going and we'll wait to hear from them and hopefully get that going.
Yeah, cause.
There are some things though, I think, that have to be done before we open. And you said we open?
March twenty-first.
March twenty-first. And we don't have our, um, you know, we talked about sitting down doing our workshop then. But if the, it's gonna open, there's probably some things we need to make a list to get to guys.
Yeah.
You know, the pressure washing and stuff like that. I don't feel, I mean, we can get that list to them. I mean, that's, we can do that, right?
Sure.
Okay. Alright, we'll make that list. I've started one. They, they probably won't like my list, but I've already started one.
That's good, cause man, I.
Well, we have the, one of the prettiest facilities around. I mean, it could, but you know, we can get it back there.
And leave it, probably check on our cameras, can't do, try to see, cause they're.
That's what I was asking if that grant had showed up about. I, I think that's a must. If we're gonna put the money into it to make it nice, we need to be able to watch it and, you know, make sure it's being taken care of.
And get it open and closed, cause we really didn't have too many problems up there at night when we blocked the bathroom. And that's where, that's where we're getting trouble.
Well, I think the cameras too would help with that whole situation.
One option might be to, and I'm sure they're out there, we can check them, but there could be a time gate.
I think that would be, that would be very smart.
If you're in there and it gets locked up.
Well, they have to call somebody there.
They may call me.
You know what I'm saying? That way you set it and opens up at eight o'clock in the morning and closes it nine o'clock at night.
You call the guys.
Yeah, but they're not gonna be here not to open, to close it.
Well, it's been a tedious issue of getting somebody to do that.
I think.
Since everything grew, I can't even hardly see the porch and the leaves come on anymore from the house. And I used to could see pretty much. And then our main security guard passed away on us a few years ago, Harold's wife. Cause if anything happened, she was.
She was out.
She didn't, couldn't go up there and call.
That's what I'm saying. If you got something that you know is gonna close, I think that might be a better option. We probably oughta look.
But Stephen, you know, but it is too, it's like anything. It's too nice to let one or two ruin it. And that's, that's what happens when you're not on site. And that's what I've been telling the guys. Like, they ride around enough, when that thing's open, right through there every hour through the day, there's three of them. They can't tell me there are four of them that they, just somebody on presence, it makes a difference.
Well, a couple of times a day anyway.
Well, and I think the cameras would play a big role in that too, though.
Cameras too, but it's gotta have some good. And then we've got to work, man, I'm finding the people, they don't care. The, the problem that we're having up there, they don't care. They're gonna go to jail. Good, I've got a warm bed in there. I mean, they, they don't, it don't really matter. So. But then there's, there's still some other things. And they're always rearranging the tables. I've been talking about bolting those tables to the spot so they leave them alone. But yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty good. But yeah, I told them we'd be, like to find as possible some new equipment. And definitely love to have that solid rubber.
Yeah, especially where the playground, like under the swings and everything, where we don't have to do the.
Lot safer.
The mulch and everything. It's not gonna hold water.
But that.
But that's, but that's big money we're talking about. That's gonna have to be some.
If we can get the ground or, you know, if you done one little spot a year, you eventually get it fixed. But playground, I seen a truck going down the river the other day, loaded it up. I thought, hmm, I oughta hijack him and take him back to town. But other than that, yeah, I mean, we definitely, park's been good. And it was closed for a lot, a lot of years. We, they more people use it than you realize. And we rent that thing pretty regular, don't we?
Peoples have already been calling, knowing when it's open. So, uh.
Which it's open now. They just don't have a bathroom enough to open somebody. You can go up there and play.
But, uh, but for parties and reunions, uh, I've already got, uh, three Saturdays in April, one in May, and two in June. Cause we don't rent it out. Cause we don't rent it out, you know, during mine or Tom coming, I'm counting the fireworks. So they're starting, um, it's twenty-five dollars for a two-hour block. It's not, it's not bad, but most people's real good about taking the trash and stuff.
And then we, we still, how does that work on our soil? We get a little piece of that pie together, you know, we.
Yeah, T D H still paying us.
So we get, and basically I'll tell somebody.
That one's ours.
No, it's okay. And that pretty much the power we get off that pretty well, cause they're upkeep of the park, I guess, don't it?
Pretty much.
I mean, really. So that's, that's pretty good. Okay.
Yeah, that one's ours.
All that, alright. But that's, that's the good thing. That's the sort of the draw I think that we'll be getting up there a lot of times. The internet, that's a good thing, but then it's just not good sometimes with what, what's been hanging around. So. And I had messed up, left the power on on that outlet and that truck to use and so killed that. And I don't think we've, I don't think we've had any more problems.
No, I think it went up there regularly.
Yeah. But other than that, yeah, I mean, I'm.
Okay, I'll work on the books for those.
The guys, you know, they're, they're looking forward to moving soon, but I think they've got everything ready. I think they've got all the equipment up and ready to go and do. So that'll be good. But yeah, we'll, we'll look.
One thing I'm thinking of, uh, before we fix the fence, if they're gonna need to get a piece of equipment in there to resurface that, it'd be a whole lot easier. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, damn, that'd not be getting to work on it to resurface that thing for six months or something.
Well, that's, I'm just saying, if we can coordinate, well, the other side, if, if we can get, just to check on the, the grants, see what, what we can get. Cause it might be something, well, though it's covered on their insurance anyway.
Cause the hardest thing, I think, for any kind of big truck would be turning the curb, cause they usually go down a hill and you come in on the bottom road. That's usually how the fireworks trucks come in.
No, I'm, no, I'm.
But if it's gonna unload.
I'm, I'm talking about inside their re, resale.
Oh, inside the.
To get in there, the basketball.
Yeah.
Yep. I measured, that's, that whole block is a one-twenty by one-twenty. So that fence they configured about fifty-eight foot there. I'm thinking from door to door, it's a little bit more than that. Or they could center it.
Right.
And then they could just unhook, I don't know. Yeah, cause you don't want a ten-foot.
Yeah, I would say, well, we're going, rather repair the fence if we're gonna do that in the next few weeks or whatever would be better. Leave that, so they'd be open so they'd get in there and do that work and, and then put the fence. Fence's usually the last thing you do. Just thinking.
Yeah. This one that I talked to, they said it would, they were looking probably two weeks out before they, so we'll, I'll ask that with whoever else we can get to come quoted to.
Cause insurance is gonna, they don't, they just get them booked, they pay the bench or whatever. So we're not. It there, anyway. It's something, we just get it going anyway, won't we? So that was it. Of course, on the sewer system install, got a couple of quotes, which in, there's no doubt when one guy come up, we actually looked through it. The way they've got it drawn out, it's got, we've got to cut the road. And it's gonna be about twelve inches wide to cut through to get that. And they'll put it back, which is, they've got the price in for the concrete and pay for redoing that. They can tunnel, you can repair the concrete and cut it for nine hundred, or you can get the bore machine and go under it for fifteen.
Do the bore.
I mean, that's, that's what.
Yeah.
That's, that's what.
Go cut the concrete.
That's what this guy said. And, uh, yeah, cause I told him, I said, that concrete's not just regular. I said, that, it was, I mean, this was, this thing.
That's high tech, yeah. It's not cutting.
High tech. But anyway, the quote for him was sixty-eight hundred dollars. And we got around, golly days. The way that thing runs down, it's along the, the road in the parking lot. And it ends up the field line way down there.
On that, yeah, no.
On that corner. So that's about two hundred twenty-five foot of ditch he's digging. And we might could make that cheaper if he wanted to use our excavator.
I wonder why they won't let us use infiltrator on that?
I think at the end of it, it will be.
I mean, that's a, you'd think you'd come out there and just do seventy-five, fifty-foot of infiltrator and be done to more than, I mean, it's one bedroom basically.
Really? I mean, this is the guys that do it every day.
Oh, I know, I know. They're going by their design.
Draw or whatever. Cause I looked in, I thought, oh, that ain't pretty bad. But we have to be careful too, cause right across the, from it, that's all Rogers property still. So it goes down around and stays off fairs. And we gotta keep it on the city property.
Right.
So, but either way, yeah. And then the other bit was fifty, what else? Gotta write it down here. What did it do with it? Fifty-eight, fifty, fifty-eight hundred maybe. And that sounds a lot cheaper. But the guy that got this bit from, he pretty much, he does a lot of work for ETC, he's very settled, doesn't stuff anymore. So I'm not sure that he's up to date on the prices. I think he's pricing on what he used to do.
Well, it's his price with a cut. And on a bore.
Root down here, but I mean, but. Yeah, he, he wasn't a bore. Yeah, he was a cut. And.
Yeah, it's worth six hundred extra dollars not to cut the concrete.
Well, I mean, you know, that's just an option. And they would be fine with that. Let me see. Get rattled. No, fifty-three hundred, whatever it said. And you think, I just basically told him, man, we got April fifth. We're gonna be paying out another six hundred dollars. And most of them, both of them said they could do it within a day.
Who's, who's what? Which ones?
Uh, Josh Hampton is the sixty-eight hundred.
Where, where's he from?
Uh, Thurstown, foreigner. And then, cause that was around Spurlin. Here, but Randall does a lot of work with ETC, and laid a lot of cable stuff, more than, but he would be, I guess willing to do it, but I, I just sent him the stuff, he didn't actually come up here and walk over it. The one thing we ran into the other night, and I didn't think about it, but I think trustee came today after they done that other and marked. 'Cause we got those lines from the.
Yeah, the underground.
Yeah, from the sort of fields coming through, and I didn't know where they went.
Yeah.
And, but anyway, so they got all that stuff marked.
Yeah, they're out in front.
Yeah, but they can, he, this, that Randall didn't see when he could start it, if we went that way, this, yeah, here, whether, if, if Josh does it, he said Monday, he could probably get started on it.
Okay, I make a motion to approve Josh Hampton.
Okay.
Second.
With a board.
Okay, I'll let him know then, yeah, with a board, 'cause, uh, yeah, really, that's probably too bad to go under, we, my mind, they keep that in mind.
No, it's a blue tank, and all this, yeah, it's.
Thousand gallon tank, I think it was, and it'd be right outside the door, ten foot from the building, or whatever there, but that's the only thing. And, I'll talk to you about that property down there, but I'm gonna get there, look at it, make sure I'm not wrong, but I think they just didn't, the deed recorded, it just wasn't split, so, that there, we going down, we got plenty of property for it to.
Yeah.
But, Rocco?
Mary Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Tally?
Yes.
Commissioner Hook?
Yes.
Yeah, get that done.
Yeah, we've been waiting too long on that one, and we'll get that down here in the next, that'll be a big help.
Can anybody here form Monday?
Another thing I wanna sorta talk about that counted mine, and I know the guys have had a problem with it, and we've had a problem with it. On the trash pickup, we've got some folks around here, apparently likes to use the fifty-five or sixty gallon, the big black bags. And I don't know if they bodies in them or what, but they cannot fling them over the truck. And some of them, when they open them, it's pieces of building materials, or whatever, rather than haul it yourself, they wanna bag it up, and guys pick it. It's hard, I mean, our guys ain't young, but to fling something that big, and I don't know if we don't, we might not wanna put a limit, not on the number of bags, but the size, like, just basically, our, our, basically, it's household garbage.
Yeah.
So thirteen gallon bag might be, and, 'cause I told them the other day, I said, if it comes up and you've got one of them, leave it. I mean, leave it, and, of course, we had it down here at the end, yeah, I'd cleaned out the trailer, man, I mean, but couches, anything that's in that trailer on the side, and we want them to pick it up, and I said, no. And then the next weekend, they told him, and he went and got a trailer and was loading it. I know it all goes to the same place, but even though we, on our case, and we can use that dump no matter what, they always question when they start bringing too much junk, where are you getting that? You know, me and you can take it, no problem, but if the city guys show up with more than normal, they get fired up, but anyway, I'm just, it, it just, like I said, our guys are getting older, but I'm telling you, there's, they've been some, they were like fifteen bags, and I, I told you where it was coming from, you didn't know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, well, thirteen gallon is a kitchen garbage.
Yeah.
But what's the next one, regular trash can?
Ah, different.
Thirty.
Thirty.
I mean, thirty?
Thirty, yeah, and then thirty-three.
Yeah, but they're putting the stuff that not, that they're trying to get away from or with, putting in the black bags, so nobody can see what it is.
Well, the rea, the reason is, uh, Grassley Creek won't take construction material. I haven't been able to dump construction material there over two years.
Well, then they could, if they wanna bag it up, they could, or range, drag it off a bag with theirself.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, that's where your problems coming from, 'cause, like, so, what they're trying to do is get by with just sticking it in the bag, and let the city boys do it. 'Cause otherwise, they have to take it to Fanning County, take Polk County trash to Georgia to dump it. So that, that is the issue, and that, that is why they're trying to get by with it, 'cause they've, they've ran into resistance when they get to Grassley Creek trying to dump it.
But if me and you pull a fur with a truck, and get some on our way, and drag it off in there.
Oh.
If they don't know what it is, okay.
I should, I, I'm, I'm gonna find your off days, and I'm gonna let you go with me.
Okay.
Maybe if I'm with the mayor.
Oh, God, they told me you both in there then.
No, 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 you can't, you can't dump construction material in there, you, you almost have to prove it's from your house. If, if it, if it's from any other, it doesn't matter, like, for instance, if, uh, say, say I, you know, say I'm helping some old lady over here on Buzzard Roos, and she's got some, you know, some shingles laying out there, maybe some old tuba fours, whatever, I throw them on there. If it ain't from my house, it don't matter that it's from a Polk County property, if it's not from my house, uh, the, the rule is, right now, they, they, the, the, as far as I know, uh, they, they passed it, that if it's not from your own personal house, you can't dump it.
Whether they consider commercial, or somebody who doing work for somebody.
And it's like here in town, we want them to get dumpstered, better, and that's what.
But that's what they're running into, that's what.
Yeah, should have. But anyway, but I'm just, regardless, if it's a thirteen gallon, and it weighs fifty pound, it's tough to fling it over back of the truck, so.
Well, uh, I guess just to make sure, 'cause there's thirteen gallon, and I want to say, I've seen fifteen gallon, some of them for.
But your most common kitchen garbage is thirteen, isn't it?
Yeah, but what I've been is, you don't wanna dictate what a size garbage bag do, on that part, really, the problem is, is them putting, uh, construction material and larger items in garbage, garbage bags that ain't, that shouldn't be in there.
So, if, if, is, what brought this, they had like fifteen bags at the place. And it was all Mickey and Keith both could do to pick them up, and one of them broke, and there was a piece of the tile floor in it, which you.
No, I, I understand, it's construction material.
And the floor, and this, new home, so, but basically, I told them after that, leave it.
Yeah, if it's construction material, leave it.
They gonna call them Ray's King, but hey, whatever, you know?
Yeah.
But that's when, I, I ain't saying we have to do, I just bringing it to the kitchen, to figure out what we can do to help the guys out.
No, no, I'm just, no, I'm saying, we need to decide that. We need to make sure that we do the right size.
Yeah.
Uh, or the, the simpler thing might be just send everybody a thing, and just tell them, no construction material in the.
That's what I was thinking. We could start with that, and then if it still continues, then we could go.
And if we find it, we're not gonna be picking up garbage.
Um.
We should have one.
Yeah, but that, my picture's right there, those papers, and it, it's a list of what they can and can't pick up, and to make sure it is in a, in a bag, but, yeah, them contractor bags, those things, you can tell a difference between contractor and household.
Sit down, and ask out a letter, and tell them, tell them, more or less, if you violate it, then we're gonna discontinue your garbage, your sanitation pickup.
I agree.
For a month or two, anyway.
I mean, it's tough, and we, we know, we have garbage come from outside the county, which, what do you do, it, it still all go in the same place. But I think we must put, our garbage must weigh more than, I don't know, yeah, but we won't go down that way. Everything's good, and we're gonna do what we keep doing, but I just, I just know with them, as they get older, even west of John, but you go to try and fling fifty, sixty pound pile of construction debris over the side of that truck, it.
Well, it's not just the bags, like, people's been moving out on Main Street, and they just leave their furniture sitting on the thing, glass everywhere. That's, you know, that's, that's inappropriate, and that shouldn't.
Yeah, it's, it's something that, when we get all this other, hopefully, set up with our court, we'll see a big change in a lot of that. And that, hopefully, after next Friday, we'll, we'll get the contract signed up, and we can get all that started, and get, get our codes enforcement dudes in place, and start going, yeah. Yeah, 'cause the first, first round definitely be letters, um, you know, to let them know that we are gonna have court, and they'll pay fines or clean it up. Hey, everybody come to my house, I swear, I can stand out there, nobody even waves at me no more, 'cause they're looking across the road. Did you ever see me in the yard? No, okay, crap, no, 'cause I'm looking the wrong way, and that guy, they just keep bringing it, I don't, I don't understand, but. But, it's not just that, and there's several, but it's some of these other places cleaned up too.
The collectors.
There's a word for that.
People working on the house. Yeah, right.
He's working on something somewhere, the first trash or something.
I mean, I thought he was remodeling the house.
Oh, no. No, that ain't his, that's, and when you talking about construction, Carol, that's coming from somewhere else too, so, yeah. He had a bunch on the sidewalk, and Mickey talked to him, or they sort of made him mad, I reckon, the way he told it.
And he's really gonna get mad with the protestations.
Yeah, but he said, that, that's my house. And he apparently had a leak in the bathroom, redone the bathroom floor, and it burned possible, 'cause it's some sheet rock stuff, and it was just piled everywhere, and it just. But anyway, hopefully, we get this set up, we can, we can take care of that in a good way, I hope. So, I don't think there's anything, we've rambled on all night, if we don't watch it, but I'm getting hungry. Let's see, uh, go ahead and do the nap, and then we'll go to the floor. March eighteenth, housing board meeting, five-thirty, and we, we definitely probably need to have that, because of that fire, 'cause we get to, talk about some things, and make some decisions on that, I'm afraid. March twentieth, planning commission, if we have anything right now, it looks like we might, but, but we won't know, Jonathan lets know, but if not, we're still gonna do a workshop at six-thirty. I don't think there's anything. Would you announce the egg hunt, that's gonna be in April, they would do that next month or next, and all that good stuff.
Be April the nineteenth at eleven a.m., the egg hunt will be, and then the park will be open regularly starting March twenty-first.
Yeah, can't really think of anything else, but other than that, we're gonna come in from the floor, who wants to go first?
Oh, man, I'm just.
Go ahead.
Just wanted, um, of course, Marty Center, Fifth and Copper Basin, I've got some of our members here.
There you go.
Raise your hands.
All right.
Um, so, the, the key ones for y'all to know is, um, the older fellow back there, he's quiet, but.
I met him over there.
Yeah, that's Chris Rainey, he's our assistant fire chief, he's a retired battalion chief from South Florida. So, a lot of times, if you don't see me, you'll be seeing him on the.
You drag him with you?
He's from South Florida, so just be gentle with him. But, uh, the other one that's so important to us is Eve here, Eve has got a tremendous business background, and she runs all of our books. So I'm gonna give y'all a one-sheeter tonight that gives you an overview of the last year, but we've got full, open books anytime you want. She can break them down in about forty different ways until you just get nauseated, so, um, if you ever wanna see that, I just wanted to mention. Uh, you know, March is that month that we come forward and, uh, we talk to you guys, and I had mentioned that we would bring this to you every year. High points this year is, you know, not only do we, we look to the county and look for you guys for donation, but I want you to know that our people have been working hard themselves. If you've been by the Turtle Town Station in the last six months, and seen the new paint job and all, that was done by Jack and some of the other volunteers, just out there making them look good. But, uh, so far, like, in this last year, uh, not only were we able to get a donation from you guys this last year, but, um, we, forty thousand dollar grant, and then on top of that, um, I mean, totaled our, uh, income minus that forty thousand, we brought in forty-one thousand dollars last year. We've sold t-shirts, we've done, we've done anything you can imagine, we dunking booths, um.
Chili cook off.
Hmm?
Chili cook off. So have dungeons.
Yep, uh, um, right down here at the, um, uh.
Copper Hill Brewery.
Copper Hill Brewery, they did a big fundraiser for us on two different occasions, raised a lot of money, so the community's really coming together, they're making a difference, they're stepping up. Of course, kind of a year in review, the highlights, uh, you know, we had two different fires at the Rubber Company over there, and both times we were successful. It's always that hopper that gets us, but we end up having to call in mutual aid, get a ladder out here to literally wash it all back out, 'cause it'll get to burning in the stacks. Had a couple incidences at the nursing home, um, of course, um, you know, Robuck here, just this last week, um, that was fortunately a small fire, food on the stove up into the cabinets. And then, and then, of course, the big one we just had. Uh, so, a lot of activity, and, and just kinda brag on Copper Basin a little bit, night before last, Teleco planes started burning, they started calling mutual aid. We responded, and some of our members actually saved homes in one of the communities. We had seventy mile an hour winds, and the firebrands were sideways, but got up in there and started protecting homes up there in Coker Creek, so, uh, I got called by the Coker Creek, um, uh, one of the city officials today, just really happy that Copper Basin is engaged and willing to go, uh, north, and I just reminded him, just be ready to come south, hopefully, it's for you. So I'll, I'll give this to you for your records, and, uh, if there's any questions for me or any of the other members, we'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, and we still make our annual donation out, six thousand a year.
When's it, when do we make that one?
When do we do it?
It's March.
It's in March, yeah. Yeah, I didn't think of it till I seen him, and I thought, oh, yeah, it's March, so, I do forget things from time to time, but it's still early.
I'm always a reminder.
So we can do that, okay.
Well, it ain't really that early, it's more seven, six, nine, nine, nine.
More than six, this is the first week, I just now got used to writing March.
Yeah, I'm still writing twenty-four at once.
We'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Now, we appreciate.
Yeah, really, good work.
Hopefully, this, they'll get everything worked out on this over here and get it cleaned up, but I like that deal a lot better, we talked about, yeah, works. 'Cause mine have to catch on fire, if I can get a gun out of it, I'm gonna get it to holdings out, but I don't want it to go. I don't wanna have to clean up nothing.
And if, uh, I know, if you start looking at doing work on the water system on the other side, there are functional hydrants, and then there's some of the old, old ones.
Yeah.
Um, it would probably come better from you guys, I'll ask for it too, if you can get the, um, utilities, if they're not gonna remove them, at least paint them black, those ones that are just out of service.
I think, they, I think they removed, didn't they not take some of the old ones?
Yeah, they took some of them out.
And got, if they're bad, they took them.
Yeah, that's the.
And I'm thinking, with these grants, I'm pretty sure utilities to try to have a little bit of say, no, we don't want them here, but I think they, like, all that's federal money, they have to put them.
The commission system, too, they were.
They've got to put them, never had them be dead.
Whatever it is.
And the other key issue is just making sure, whatever influence we can have, making sure, because these hydrants are all fell, are, are all fed off of a tank, a storage tank, they're all gravity fed. In the past, um, uh, sometimes, from what I'm being told, they would let those tanks get relatively low for this.
They run out.
But, um, you know, if you get a fire like we had here last week, and we're putting, you know, fifty, sixty thousand gallons on it, it could really hurt our whole water supply to the county, so if we can keep them, uh, as reasonably filled as possible when we do have that bad day, and we need, we need to flow water.
Yeah, they.
Corner, they run out.
Run out.
They run out, and we were, they were dragging water here and there, everywhere.
Right, two-story building.
Up here, wherever they could get it, really, but.
And we, we've talked about it, if, uh, Chris and myself, if we get to a point where we know the building's lost, and we know it's not gonna spread, we're actually gonna shut the water off, because then it's more important to make sure we got water going in both directions for the county than it is to try to. So, it may mean that the structure burns longer, of course, that also means it burns up more of the debris, but my official answer is, I'm saving the water for the county, because I can't afford to be putting everybody out of water for a house that's already totaled. So if you ever hear back of, well, they let it burn for a long time, there is a decision maker, a decision-making point there of, of, use a lot of water, waste a lot of water, and then also save a lot of debris, or let it finish burning up, burn the debris up, at the same time save water for the rest of the county.
Like we're talking safety-wise.
That's right.
It's just safety, the old chimney didn't fall like we old.
We, we were hit with that.
Most of it, maybe the wind pushed it over.
We tried everything, I don't know who built it, but I'm impressed.
Yeah, really, 'cause you know it's over a hundred-year-old anyway, but, yeah, I didn't figure it would, it just amazed me that it's still standing.
Yeah.
Oh, that, please.
Anybody else, you was gonna say something, what'd you?
Oh, uh, did y'all get rid of one of them hydrants, Leroy and my little hound dog, he'd like. He'd, he'd part a copper basin, part a car, so.
Yeah, they, they replaced some of them, yeah, I'll remind them of that, just to make sure, but when they get going, so hopefully, with this, we can get everything on this finished, and. I'd like to be allowed to see the next one, 'cause we figuring, we shouldn't have to touch again for forty years. I don't know, I don't feel a hundred-year-old or not, I don't know, but it would be good.
Some ounces, probably.
Yeah, we, that's why I'm saying, we get it fixed, you know, that's somebody else's baby, but, but gotta leave it better than you find it, and hopefully, I think all that was built eighty-one, eighty, eighty-one, so, they've lasted pretty good, but they, they's a lot of problems. I think today, they were looking for a leak somewhere in town, wasn't it, did they ever find it?
I don't know if they ever found it.
I don't know.
Even had issues with the school because of it.
Yeah, and every time I saw them, they'd be checking one, and then drive and checking the other one, so they were still checking at five o'clock today, so, maybe they did, I don't know, I hadn't heard anything.
But other than that, and that's, that's part of the reason we're, we're running the grants through the city, but, otherwise, they wouldn't be able to do it, and they do, they have a lot of, lot of water loss, so, we can take care of town, there's not a lot we can do out in the county, that's, but definitely take care of it here. But definitely take care of it here.
I do wanna thank you for putting resources into that park, it's a great situated park, you know?
You should've seen before we started.
Make it into a pickleball core area, that's a good use of funds.
It is, it, it will be, and, and I thought it, and got so much, and she missed out the plan, it's pretty good, so, so yes. You do this and get it fixed, and we'll put you in.
Ready, give me some money.
Does the, does the water company do hydrant maintenance on a regular basis?
I don't...
I wouldn't count on it.
I don't know.
They're, they're supposed to, but, uh, that's always been a, uh...
It's been sourced, uh...
Sourced, well, it's an ongoing thing between fire service and, and them.
Yeah. Most of the time, there's only a handful of us that are, that, you know, busy doing things, so chances are the rest of them are all working, so it'd be nice if we could get some help doing it.
What we used to get into, the issue is, cause you go out and you flow it, and, you've talked to Marty, they, well, you're, you're draining water that we didn't know about, and...
Right.
But that's what you need to do, you need to drain, drain it, make sure you get all the rust out of the hydrants. And, and, and of course, and then grease all the, all the threads, I mean, it's just, that way, when we get there and need it, we have it, you know? And maybe we can make out some kind of an agreement between them and us.
And I wouldn't, if, I hope that we got a little bit better relations with them now or whatever, we can, I mean, I, what I'd like to see, especially the ones in, in town, is to work out something with y'all, where, like you said, you can, especially the new ones, all you gotta do is crack the hydrant and just let it, oh, you know, you ain't gotta free-flow it for five minutes. Uh, just crack it open and flow it, put your oil on it, and shut it back, you know, the paint if it needs it.
You know, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, what we may try to do, Chris, is instead of always filling up at, at, uh, the fire station at the community center, just pick us a hydrant right here in the center and fill it, we, we go through a lot of water, we probably go through ten, fifteen thousand gallons a month without the fires, so we'll try to pick a place here, and that way we're filling up trucks and flushing the system at the same time.
Do that.
Yeah.
Or if we know the amount of hydrants, maybe we can divide it up and do so much a month. Maybe we can get a group of people to get together and do so many on a Saturday or something, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a great idea, I'd, I'd love to see you do them all. Uh, we're all for it. But like I said, the, that's, that, just need to coordinate with them, if they'll work with us. But it, it's definitely a need. Uh, it's, uh...
You don't think about it till your house is on fire, then you have to start thinking.
Until you open it up and nothing comes out, then you really worried about it.
Yeah, it absolutely made a difference last week.
Yeah, it sure did.
Break the bolt in, with the engine.
New hydrant up there.
We got the first two lines off, and then he hooked straight to that hydrant, and, uh, and then we never had a problem after that.
We'd, we'd have lost one on one house.
Yeah, I think we kinda melted yours a little bit, sorry.
A little tart.
I did my best, it was hot over there. Yeah, it was right down.
Yeah, kinda think about it, I mean, we'd be, either we'd get together and try to contact them, or if y'all want to, then tell them we're on board with it, we'd be happy to set something up.
Okay.
Some kind of program.
I think we can reach out in my...
Tell them we're requesting that our hydrants be serviced, if possible.
And whenever, we're giving them, we've done, what, five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand? No, seven fifty for the water tank. We've done already one point two, and we'll give that two, two point two million dollars, and we've worked through the city for the water boards.
You mentioned the water tank, do you know the size that is?
The newest one they built, I think, now this is one out here by here. I think a million gallon? I don't know if we built that, one of them they built, it might be the one above the bean place, it might've been a million gallon, I don't remember.
I'm, I'm thinking this might be five hundred.
I was asking.
The issue is, is they just maintaining the level in it. And, so, you, just cause it's million or five hundred, it may only be halfway.
If they're at fifteen or twenty percent.
Yeah, fifteen or twenty. Now, they, they're supposed to, they're supposed to, you know, bring it up and keep it at the minimum level or whatever, to a certain point over the weekends and stuff.
They know pretty much what people use.
They done better.
This, um, scene, I mean, you don't know how that's gonna happen. I said, you don't think much about it, till it's yours, then you want everything, you want every hydrant, everybody working up. So, well, so anything from anybody else? You just come to be here today?
Sort of, yeah.
It's all right.
And I saw cars here, and I thought, you know, tonight's... And I was thinking though, that...
Free tip cakes.
Yeah, I was thinking though, it's a, that spring that the city has, I mean, can, can that ever be any kind of backup resource or anything like that for, for water source or anything like that, for...
Well, I'd love to have it, and I drink it, so we're...
Yeah, it'd be good.
It just seems like it's a, seems like it's a huge, it's also a resource not to be used.
Find the money and the proper, uh, maybe a grant, we're gonna have a little hydroelectric generator.
So you already been thinking about that?
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I don't know if you guys are aware of it, over here on our property, two hundred ninety acres, there's nine springs back in those hills, that they all tied to one pipe, and these are, I guess that's four, six or five.
Four inch.
They're just, and we had it tested several years ago, and it's ninety-nine point nine percent pure, I mean, they...
And how many gallons a minute, do you remember?
There's no telling.
Is it always, always flowing?
Yeah, it's flowing out the end, and we drilled a hole in it, and it shot water, what, six, eight foot in there, where it's still rolling. But, but, and what, where, where that came from, the pipe being cut with all the glands spring, and it feeds to, to help clean the water. That used to operate London Mill.
Well, I'd say, go ahead and build us a fire station up there somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, I'm thinking the other day, is if we run into a situation where we basically start running out of the gravity feed water, you know, I was, and next thing I was thinking is then we're going into Copper Hill and trying to draft out of that river there, but if there's a... And the company has offered to let us use one of their holding ponds if we ever need to draft there too, so I'm just, I'm always looking for water sources. The what ifs scenario.
Cause I don't know, I, I noticed, looked off at Cherokee Pond the other day, and they still got a dry hydrant down there, but there's no access to it, are there?
I don't know if, probably not now.
Master grew up, you can't get, like I seen about, it's still there, so, that's something, if we head over here. But it's often a hole, it's not really easy to get to, yeah. But now that's, that is, I'd love to have that as our water system. And it may be one of these days, Courtney wants to do, he's gonna be in jail, he's gonna be too old to worry about it. But it's nice to have, we've had different, well, ball companies, different things, and that's great, we was all for it, but they basically wanted us to set them up in business, right? So we, nah, we're not, we're not doing that, but, but it, it, it's, it's good. Need to make that a trap stream, but we're done. But other than that, if nobody else has got anything to say or do, your motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
So, you get to go and take care of them bad girls, don't you? You can get right. You don't hate this?
Um, no, he's an operator, he won't.